Where will you be going?
Texas.
Damn, son, where'd you find this?
Go on, make it happen.
And now here's Steve and Michelle.
Welcome from the chilly heart of Dripping Springs. We are Mallett and Michelle, hosted by me, Michelle Lewis and Steve Mallett. I didn't have anything funny.
God, you didn't have anything written out? I was like, oh, that sounds like the same old boring intro.
Do you know what this week has been like?
It has been.
Crazy.
Productive.
Very productive.
Very productive. We got a lot done. Our guest today is going to be Rob McClelland, who's a DSISD School Board trustee.
Yeah, I wonder.
We've never had anybody on from the school board.
No, I wonder if he knows what he's getting himself into. I got some good questions.
Yeah, I know. I think we're gonna ask him a bunch of good questions, so I'm looking forward to talking to him. We're gonna do our monologue and then take a little break and get him in here.
We need to thank our sponsors, Nomic Power Solutions.
Jovi Belterra.
South Star Bank.
And Mallett Integrity Team.
That is why we are so busy because Mallett Integrity Team, we are, we have like listings coming out of the wazoo.
Going right now, yeah. Could you guys come buy some of these listings, please?
Please, anybody, anybody in the market?
So I've started this new thing at the beginning of the year. I've been doing audiobooks.
Oh, I'm actually reading the book.
Well, I actually say I'm reading the book, but I'm listening to it. So I've been reading these two books.
You're a cheater.
No, reading. I've been reading these two books.
Okay, I need, I need to see if they're interesting because I want a book as I go to Dallas.
All right, I have two. One is Nobody's Coming to Save You: A Green Berets' Guide to Getting Big Shit Done by Scott Mann. That was an exceptional book.
Okay.
It's about motivating people to do what you want them to do without like forcing them, like getting them along for the ride.
So does this mean you're gonna be using some of these tactics on me?
I have already used those tactics.
Oh, really? And have they worked?
No. You know what that tells me is I'm not very good at it yet. I'm still practicing. One of the things he talks about is telling stories to motivate people. And I've never really done that, but I've been trying it and practicing it. And it actually works. You do get, I actually told a story, I won't tell the whole details. But I was telling this story and one of the, the women that was there where I was telling the story to get them motivated started crying. I was like, damn, that works.
I made her cry the other day, too. I told her a story and I made her cry.
Maybe it's easy to make her cry. The second book is Good Energy by Dr. Casey Means, which, you know, there's so much disinformation out there right now about, you know, what to eat, what to avoid, organic, non-organic, seed oil, blah, blah, blah. She will give you the science behind what you should be eating and, and what you should avoid at all costs.
Okay, maybe I'll listen to that one.
I highly recommend it. It's a, like a 15-hour audiobook, but I have been, yeah.
15 hours?
Yes, but I'm telling you.
I'm not driving to Minnesota.
You will be, you'll be gripped by it the whole time. She's, she tells you, you know, what, okay, you do that, you put this in your body, this is what happens. If you put this in your body, this is the positive thing that happens. She said yesterday, just to give you an idea, she said, if you're not filtering your water, then your body is the filter. And I was like, damn, I never thought about that. She's talks, she, just one of the things she talks about is all the chemicals that are in our public water supplies that are legal, but not very good for you.
So she, she's like actually reinforcing what I say, and I don't drink sink water.
Sink water.
No, that's gross. It's disgusting. Um, I am actually reading a book. You're going to laugh at this book. I am reading Becoming Bridget, Bridget. And.
Becoming Bridget.
Yeah, and it's, it's by Candace Owens, and it's about the French president's wife and the whole investigative journalism that she's done.
I've heard some of this stuff.
About how, I haven't started it. I just, I just got it. Just got it in.
Isn't it about his, his wife?
Wife that could either be his former teacher or his father, but some way or another, it's probably a man. She's doing God's work out there, Candace Owens. She's doing God's work.
If nothing else, you'll be captivated by that story.
So yeah, I, I got it in and Taco goes, you got another book in? And I was like, open it up. And he's like, are you kidding? He goes, oh, this looks good.
I heard Joe Rogan talking about this and he, he, for, one of the few times Joe Rogan got a little bit kind of nervous about what he was saying. I was like, well, uh, there's some stories out there that maybe she used to be a man and, ah, he was like, I didn't want to touch it, but the guy's the president of France.
Oh, I know. But then like, I, I've been watching videos because of course, I guess TikTok knows I'm, I'm about to read this book. And like they're looking at the mannerisms and how Bridget holds like a purse or how Bridget walks or the wig.
Crazy world we live in.
So speaking of crazy worlds, right? We're all about manners, right? You're talking about, yes, ma'am. And I wanted to talk about, and this is not necessarily southern manners, but this is what I was taught and I think that everybody across the, especially adolescents should learn this because they're all on social media now. And I don't think people, when I was, uh, 10, 11 or so, my, believe it or not, my grandmother sent me to etiquette school.
Really?
She did.
So what happened?
I started working for you 10 years ago and everything I went, but this is kind of beyond the yes, ma'am, no, sir, the thank yous. I think people started getting out of when all the woke BS started happening. People were afraid to say yes, ma'am, no, sir.
I've caught myself recently doing that.
Well, I never cared and I continue to do it, but I think it's all about social awareness and I think Chick-fil-A has done a really good job of raising up the my pleasure kids. You know, like, oh, my pleasure. And I used to say, before I started working for Chick-fil-A, I used to say, um, you are more than welcome. It's something I always used to say. And then it just got the whole my pleasure. They're so polite anytime you go through Chick-fil-A.
The hiring that happens at Chick-fil-A is phenomenal.
Well, there's a whole culture behind that. But okay, so here, I'm gonna throw a couple of at you. So your kids, um, this is, I'm primarily focusing on adolescents, like, you know, under 20-year-olds. But this, this applies, if you, if you're doing this to your teenager, you're telling your teenager to do this when you're adult.
Sure.
He'll do it. So you go to somebody's house, right? They've invited you over. When you're leaving, you should say, thanks for having me. That sounds simple, right?
That's a no-brainer, yeah.
Absolutely. But think about how many kids have come over to your house and they just leave, right? Thanks for having me, Mrs. Lewis. Thanks for having me, Mr. Mallett.
Never thought about that, but I do that all the time. I do that when we go on listing appointments. Thanks for having us over. Appreciate it seeing your house.
Because your parents, you know, probably, okay, one of the other thing is when you're going to somebody else's house, you need to take your shoes off when you enter their house because you don't know what their rules are, right? How about holding the door open, not only for women, this isn't only for boys, but holding the door open, even if you're a female, for older people or women in strollers. If you are, just because you're a female doesn't give you carte blanche to walk through that door first.
I think if you are walking through the door and somebody's coming up behind you, you should always hold it for them, regardless of who they are. It's just a nice, it's sort of a nice, friendly, neighborly thing to do. Like, let me hold the door for you.
I just feel like kids aren't doing that anymore. Um, when you borrow items, you're gonna return those borrowed items in the same condition or better. Yes.
Or better.
Yes, that was always something that was drilled into my head.
Borrow somebody's tools, you bring it back and it's just in okay shape. You bring it back sparkling.
Better. And if you lost it, you replace it.
With a brand new one.
That's right.
Not one from the bottom of your toolbox.
Absolutely. Um, don't start eating until everyone else is served.
Has their food.
I have noticed this even in, in business lunches, food will come to the table and, you know, you're waiting until everybody's done. And I will, it's just a habit and the person next to me is just chowing down and the person down the end of the table hasn't gotten their food yet. It's just common courtesy. Now, unless, like if you're sitting there waiting, if I say, no, 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 go ahead and start.
Or if it's gonna be, if the server comes out and says, oh, I'm sorry, we screwed up your steak. It's gonna be another 10 minutes. Well, then not everybody at the table should wait and let their food get cold.
Yeah, just go ahead and start.
But yeah, if it's just a matter of the servers coming back, making another trip, then I agree with you. You sit and wait.
And if you're at somebody else's home and they have made you dinner, you're gonna get up. I taught my kids this all the time and I always got compliments for it. You're gonna either offer to clear the table or you're gonna offer to do the dishes. Nine times out of 10, that person is gonna tell you, no, but you know what? They're gonna appreciate it. Especially if it's coming from a 15, 16-year-old boy.
Certainly will.
Yeah, let me, let me do the dishes. But I, but never, never, never leave your plate sitting there. Always pick your plate up and go take it when you're, when you're done. Um, oh, I told you about this one the other day and you were like, oh, I was taught this. Do not walk on other people's grass. Don't do that.
Isn't that crazy? Uh, you know what happened to me this morning? Uh, Amazon dropped the package off at, at the wrong door. They dropped it at my neighbor's house this morning. At 3:53, they dropped my package off at the neighbor's and then drove across my lawn.
What?
Yeah.
They drove across your lawn?
They drove across my lawn. I got it on my Ring camera.
Well, that's a little bit different than not walking on your grass.
But I agree with you. I remember being a kid and I was walking across somebody's lawn. A guy came out and yelled at me and I went home like, dad, that guy yelled at me. He's like, you were on his lawn.
Yeah.
Don't, don't walk on his lawn.
I remember my kids, um, my neighbor got mad at them because they were playing in my neighbor's yard. And he opened the door and goes, good, play in your own yard. And my kids were like, what? And I said, this is your yard. You can play in your yard. But he had a cul-de-sac lot and he had bigger yard, so they wanted to do that. How about, I've learned a lot about this one over the last couple of weeks. How about taking social clues when it's time to leave?
If you come to my house, it's pretty easy to read that social clue.
All the lights are off in your.
No, it's like, okay, we're done. See you later. I don't mess, you can ask Gracie. I don't mess around like, okay, Gracie, love you. See you later. Go, just go.
You, there's, there's no minced words.
There's no minced words. It's like, it's time for me to go to bed. You can go now.
Get out. Well, some people just don't get it. Some people don't understand, especially when you have small children.
I think the key is to stay less than you think you're welcomed. Do you know what I mean? If you think, okay, you know, there probably one is gone by eight o'clock, leave at 7:30.
Yeah, the, the clue is the sign on the door. Leave by, leave.
Please, especially us early sleepers.
True. How about, I've seen this at HEB a lot. Let's say if somebody's in front of, I don't know, the pork and bean aisle, right? They're looking at all the pork and beans. They're standing there and they're trying to decide which one you want, they want. And you walk in front of them, either because somebody's behind them or you walk in front of them to grab something, saying, excuse me, when you're either passing.
People that do that, but don't say excuse me?
Yes, I even do it like if they're on the other side. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Oh, no, it's okay. Go ahead.
Just be neighborly.
Just be neighborly. Just, how about, don't talk on speakerphone in public. We've talked about this one before. Don't talk on speakerphone in public. Nobody wants to hear your conversation or FaceTime.
Bad one.
The FaceTime is like.
And if you're in a crowded area and you get on the phone, even not on speakerphone, excuse yourself to go someplace quieter where not everybody around you has to listen to your side of the conversation.
That's true. Well, this one is the last one, and I thought this was kind of funny because I've seen this one before and most recently, uh, well, this was last year. We were at a river park or a river tubing place. My son-in-law, his dad owns Zuba River Camp down by the Frio, and they have like a little gift shop. And a kid came in and they had sodas or Gatorades or whatever, and he pulls out a dollar out from his bathing suit and it's wadded, a wet dollar bill. When paying with cash, which most people don't do anymore, but don't give the bills either folded or wadded up and most especially not wet. I mean, if you're at a river camp, that's one thing, but give it to them flat. Don't expect them to, you know, orgone here.
When you're a runner and you're carrying cash, you put it in a plastic bag. Otherwise you're gonna give somebody a nasty sweaty $20 bill.
Sweaty ball cash.
Okay, are you done?
I'm done.
Any more manners?
You're welcome. No, I'm sure I, I, any more, any more Navy SEAL tactics you're gonna try to use on me?
I'm trying them right now, Michelle. You'll never know.
Go ahead.
I have a story about mystery seeds. Sid Miller, the Texas Ag Commissioner is reporting that at least five to 10 packets a day of mystery seeds are showing up on people's doorsteps, being shipped to them. And they're having a hard time figuring out, they did actually find out where they were coming from, but they were discovered to be from China. And they're, the seed packets contain water lilies, which is an invasive plant, not native to Texas. And so, uh, what was happening was people were ordering clothes from Timu, 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 Timu?
Not mu.
Timu.
Timu.
And something was happening and not, and they weren't getting the clothing. They were getting these mystery seeds, which I don't think they're illegal, but you definitely don't want them in the States.
You, you, I don't think, like, I remember when we were in Amsterdam, there, there was like a whole section, they would say, these are the flower seeds that you could bring in and these are the flower seeds you can't bring in.
Yeah, well, these seeds, uh, maybe they're not illegal, but if they're, they're water lilies, if they get into a lake or a pond, they can quickly choke out all the wildlife from that. So we don't want those. So what was happening was, yeah, China. People were throwing them in the trash. They go to the landfill. They end up in the water supply.
What?
So what Sid Miller has come out and said is if you accidentally get these seeds.
Not accidentally, on purpose, yeah.
However, it's happening. Um, don't throw them in the trash. Call up the Texas Ag Commissioner office. They will, uh, you can drop them off there and they will sterilize them so that they don't grow. Cause if it gets into like a Lake Travis or, or Town Lake or something, it could be devastating.
I wonder how you could do that on your own without having to go through all that trouble, like maybe bleach or something or?
Yeah, maybe, or gasoline.
Ooh.
Yeah, start your own fire.
That sounds like a great idea.
You know, it's kind of interesting. You would think you, you, I could see myself. I get a little packet of seeds like, I don't know, what the hell am I gonna do with these? First of all, I might actually plant them just to see what they turn into, which is not a good idea.
Jack in the beanstalk.
Or throw them in the trash because I don't want them. And then you end up with a catastrophe. So anyway, that's, that's my story is if you get mystery seeds on your front porch, don't just throw them in the trash. Call up the Texas Ag Commission.
That's fascinating.
Yeah, oh, good.
I did, I, have you ever heard of, of a term that's been rolling around lately called Republican makeup?
I have not.
So, um, you know, the, from the party of love and tolerance, um, the term Republican makeup comes forth and it's.
Oh, it's a derogatory term.
It's a derogatory term. Um, they've been, most recently, they've been making fun of Caroline Leavitt, the new press secretary. And they describe it as clumpy mascara, orange cakey foundation, half-filled lips, and everything is unblended. And I thought, the hell, why am I going to take information, that kind of information from a bunch of cat ear, dog collar-wearing squirrel tail? I mean, like, come on, it's like, all you gotta say about somebody is like normal makeup?
Did you ever hear any of these stories about the former surgeon general? Uh, did you ever hear, what, who was the guy that was, uh, worked for the Nuclear Commission that was caught? The bald-headed guy that was stealing people's luggage, that was wearing the bright red pink, bright red lipstick? Never heard anybody complaining about that. These people are, they're so, they're so stupid doing this stuff. They don't realize how they make themselves look.
I, I, look, I prefer my women to look like women. Um, I don't know. I just, I think it's cra, it's, it's something.
Crazy, that's crazy that we even have to say that out loud.
It is. And I, I heard, I heard something, this was on, on TikTok and it was a kindergarten teacher talking to her class. And it brought me back to this because I saw this quote and then I saw this Republican makeup trend going. And she told her class, she said, if you can't, if someone, I'm sorry, if someone cannot change something about themselves in 30 seconds or less, then you shouldn't be mentioning it to them. Meaning if their shoes are untied, they've got something in their teeth, they've got a little fuzz, their zipper's down, whatever, that, that's fine. But if they have body odor, if they have their hairstyle, if their clothes or something like that, unless you're close, really close with them, you shouldn't be mentioning it to someone. And I thought, that's a really good lesson. It kind of circles back to where my manners go. It kind of circles back to like, look, what's your intent of saying something?
Where do you draw the line though between like, you're with somebody that you don't really know very well and they've got spinach in their teeth, like?
I'll say something. I'll, I'll go, I'll go.
And what I always say is, you know, if, if I don't even know them very well, it wouldn't be very nice if I didn't just tell you.
If I don't like them all, if I don't like them all.
You have a salad in your teeth, I'm not gonna tell you.
Your zipper's been down for two hours and I'm not saying anything.
And we're not saying.
I was also gonna say that none of this applies to anything that I say to you. So my, my low-key bullying that I've done for you, yeah, that's just.
You are, you're so good at that.
It is, it is actually, I, I learned it from a Navy SEAL in a book that I read.
How to get big shit done.
That's right. That's right. You know what I just realized? I have one shoe on. I took my.
You have one shoe on? Or is your other shoe matching?
No, I just.
Actually came, almost came to work last week with two different shoes on.
Oh.
Pulled my, pulled them out of the closet and didn't.
I wouldn't, I don't know if I would tell you or not. I'd take pictures first.
Probably wouldn't tell me, yeah. I have a quick story. Um, you know, AI is taking over the world and.
I'm AI right now.
Yeah, you are. ChatGPT probably right now is the most common way AI is being used by just average people. And ChatGPT has a left-wing bias. There's a study, um, the University of East Anglia did a study prompted by the growing influence of AI. And they found that AI tools like ChatGPT are not neutral and can amplify political biases to the left.
I don't know if mine is. I think mine is thoroughly confused about all of this stuff that I've put into my ChatGPT, GGP.
Well, I know. It's, when it's learning all the time, but if you, if you put in something like, uh, why should I vote for Trump? It will give you, actually, I'll give you a different example. Um, if you type in, uh, universal basic income into ChatGPT, put in, uh, um, the benefit, the pros and cons of chat, of, uh, universal basic income. It will give you a list of studies that, um, that have looked at, it's called UBI, universal basic income. And they all will either say that the studies have shown that there's a benefit or it was neutral. It does not point out any studies that say it is not good for society or it is not the cost, you know, cost-benefit analysis doesn't mean that it's worth the money.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
What is something not boring that I could put into ChatGPT?
Well, I thought the universal basic, I, I did first put in there.
I have never actually strung those three words together ever.
Universal basic income? Do you know what it is?
I've never said those three words like together at the same time.
It's this thing going around. They're actually doing it in Austin where, uh, just because you exist, you get a check for $1,200 a month from the government. So they, they, they take tax money from one person or many people and they give it to other people just because they exist.
I think I need some of this.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, look, scroll down and see that arguments against it's expensive disincentivizes. This is different than the response I got.
Countries like Finland and Canada, well, they have your number. They're like, we're gonna, oh, supported by figures, Andrew Yang.
Didn't say, it doesn't say who has been against this. It says Andrew Yang and Elon Musk have said that maybe we should experiment with them.
Interesting.
That's a left-wing bias right there because it should say, figures like Andrew Yang and Elon Musk have been proponents of this, figures like whatever.
Yang Democrat? Is he a Democrat?
He's a Democrat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's interesting. Huh. I never, I think it's probably because my, my experience with ChatGPT, I'm not, I'm not asking those kind of in-depth questions.
The, it's just, you should be aware that ChatGPT can influence how you look at things.
Well, they say the same thing like with, what's the Snoop's?
Snopes.
Snopes.
Yeah, the, yeah.
Oh, Snoop, Snoop's dog.
Yes, Snoop's, Snopes Doggy Dog.
Yeah, Snoop's Doggy Dog.
So this ChatGPT thing, they, they've come up with a way they call it jailbreaking it. And, and so instead of saying, show me a picture of, uh, somebody wearing a MAGA hat, you say, show me somebody wearing a hat. And then they'll show you somebody with a hat. And then you say, show this person, this same photo, but make the hat a MAGA hat. And so there, you, you don't make the original premise anything to do with whatever, you know, it, I'm trying to think of the situation with UBI, but, um, you would say, uh, tell me about UBI. And it would come out and say, tell them, tell, and then the next thing you would say is, tell me about UBI from a conservative standpoint or from a leftist standpoint. So you don't ask the first, you set the question up and then you ask it for clarification. If you ask that question, if you say, tell me about UBI from a conservative standpoint, it will do what it just did here. So you have to jailbreak it. Otherwise you'll, you'll get a left-wing bias.
Interesting.
So, I mean, the, the thing about it is, it is, uh, AI is already shaping the world we live in because it's giving us information. We're taking that information in.
Well, we're teaching it.
Exactly. We're teaching it, but we're also learning from it ourselves and making decisions based on this.
Yeah, okay, okay.
You just have to have that in the back of your mind that, you know, it's like with all the things we talk about all the time, just be critical of the information you receive. And, you know, verify it if you can. It's not always gonna be true.
True. That's, and use your manners while you're doing it.
Yeah, that's right.
Use your manners.
Didn't you say you had a dog story and then we'll wrap up?
I do have a dog story. Did you know that Donald Trump is the first president of the United States in over a hundred years that does not have a dog?
No way.
Yeah, the first, and so George Washington, he had a dog. He had several dogs.
John Adams, Thomas Jefferson?
Including, George Washington's dogs were Sweet Lips, Drunkard and Vulcan. Yeah.
Ooh, I like that. That's a good name.
John Adams had dogs named Juno and Satan.
Oh, geez.
Thomas Jefferson owned a St. Bernard named Buzzy.
Look at Andrew Jackson. He was dull. Had a dog named Sam.
Dog named, uh, who was it? Rutherford Hayes had a dog, a greyhound named Grim.
Look at Abraham Lincoln, uh, no originality, had a dog named Fido.
Fido. Um, let's go a little bit in, in kind of our areas. How about, well, John F. Kennedy, he had a, oh, he had a several dogs, including one was a gift from the Soviet Union, which they probably.
Pushinka?
They probably planted some microphone in him.
Mystery seeds.
I always remember, uh, President Johnson, LBJ, he had those beagles named Him and Her. I do remember that, the Him and Her. And then of course, the, probably I think one of, one of the famous ones was Nixon's dog, Checkers. Do you remember Checkers?
A cocker spaniel.
Yeah, a cocker spaniel.
I didn't know that. I just read it off the.
Joe Biden had two German shepherds that would bite, uh, all of the Secret Service major and apparently they took a crap in the Oval Office. There was that. Barack Obama.
Joe knew he had those two dogs?
No, I think it was either him or Joe. But Barack Obama had really pretty, those Portuguese water dogs. They were so pretty, bow and sunny. And George W. had, um, they're known for Scottish terriers, Barney and Mrs. Beasley. But I, so presidents without dogs.
What do you think that says about, oh, okay, go ahead.
James K. Polk, right? No dog. Andrew Johnson, though he didn't have a dog, he cared for white mice in the White House. Okay, so there was that. And Donald Trump, he does, the first president in over a century without a house pet. But some people have said.
What do you think that means?
I just think the man never sleeps. I don't think he has time.
He has the energy to do what he's doing. In 30 days, he's done more in the government than the previous four years.
Some people said that his pet is Elon Musk. That's his pet.
There you go. And on that note, we're gonna take a little break and get Rob McClelland in here from DSISD School Board. So hang on, sit tight. We'll be right back.
Are you tired of being left in the dark when the power goes out? Say goodbye to blackouts with Nomic Power Solutions.
As your full-service Generac dealer, they offer individually designed backup power solutions.
From start to finish, they've got you covered.
Nomic Power Solutions, keeping you powered up.
Call or text 512-387-4232, or visit nomicpower.com. Follow on Instagram at Nomic Power for updates.
Nomic Power Solutions, protect your home, protect your family, stay ready. South Star Bank has remained true to its Texas roots for over 100 years. A commitment to the people and communities they serve, along with flexible financial solutions, allow their clients to shine. Mortgage loans, checking accounts, or complete business solutions. South Star Bank is your financial partner. South Star Bank, trusted by professionals, backed by tradition, built for Texas.
SouthStarBank.com. Member FDIC and equal housing lender. NMLS 410624. Find your joy at Jovi Belterra. Life is better here. This vibrant 55 and up community is located in Dripping Springs, just right outside of Austin. One and two-bedroom homes, resort-style amenities, and just steps away from shops and restaurants. Forget the yard work. This is your time to relax, make new friends, and enjoy the life you've dreamed of. Find your joy at Jovi Belterra. Life is better here. LiveJoviBelterra.com, 737-387-6870.
This show is brought to you in part by the Mallett Integrity Team, serving Dripping Springs, Austin, and the surrounding areas of central Texas since 2004. When you need the best real estate advice and service, give them a call at 512-829-2062, or email them at mallettintegrityteam.com. And now here's Steve and Michelle.
And we're back with Rob McClelland, who's a school board trustee. Welcome to the show, Rob.
Thank you, Steve, Michelle. It's very nice to be here with y'all today.
Thank you for being here.
So tell us how you ended up in Dripping Springs.
Well, I was wrapping up my army career. Uh, it was 2017. I was finishing up my time at the White House. I was there three and a half years. It was a pretty cool assignment.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Wait, wait, wait. What'd you do? What was your assignment?
Oh, so I worked, I worked for the President of the United States, uh, doing logistics at the White House for three and a half years as an army major.
How exciting. I worked for the President of Dripping Springs Elite, so it's kind of the same thing.
It is. I'd say so. I would now put Dripping Springs above that in my tenure of things I've got to do.
So this was the Biden, no?
End of Obama. And then I got the first about eight to 12 months under Trump's tenure. Yeah.
So how was that?
It was an adventure. Uh, I like to say Trump wore me out. Uh, when he, when he got elected and got in there, um, there, there were not much of an administration. You know, I think it was kind of like, we always kind of like, did they think they were gonna win? Cause they, they don't have anybody here. Um, and so really the White House Military Office was instrumental, uh, in, in kind of the, the transition. And so really the White House Military Office was instrumental in, in kind of the, the transition. Ensuring that nothing, none of the balls dropped and everything was kind of going. And so, but he also wanted to make a lot of changes. And so doing the logistics for that inside the White House and the renovations that came and all those types of things, I was heavily involved in that process. And so that was a lot, real lot of fun. Let me tell you, I'll tell you this quick story about the attention to detail, whether, whether you like him or don't like him, that the president has. One of the things that I was responsible for was all the flags in, in the West Wing and the White House. And so the presidential flag, the American flag, the Vice President and all the army branches, all this type of things. And so when President Trump got elected, he wanted the Oval Office to kind of mirror his commander in chief role, right? Presidents got three, three roles, Commander in Chief, Head of State, and Chief Executive, right? But his commander in chief role, he wanted that to be, again, my understanding was he wanted that to be his part in the Oval Office. And so one day, he was coming out of a meeting and going into the Oval Office and told his staff, grab all these flags and take them in my office. And so literally they, they, they did that. I got a call from one of the, the staff members there saying, Rob, I don't know what happened, but the Oval looks very different than it did about two hours ago. And I don't know if this is right. We probably should fix this. And so I came down there and met with the military aide at the time, a great guy. And we found a way to turn what the president wanted into what it is. Actually, believe it or not, today, as he just started his second term, the decisions we made back in his first term are actually now in place again today, except for they knew this time what they were doing. We had to kind of figure it out.
Yeah.
So it was cool. So things like that happened at the beginning of, of Trump's term, his first term, just because it was a lot of change. A lot of change. Kept me busy.
He seems like he was a lot more prepared coming into office for this.
He had four years to, yeah, yeah, think about it.
There's been, yes, there's a lot more, again, my understanding, I'm not there anymore, but certainly not the first term.
Do you have friends that are still there?
Not many. Yeah. If anybody now, it's, it may be people that are in, in, in politics and things like that, that are getting appointed to different things and so on and so forth. So a little bit different than being a blocker and tackler, which is what I was as an army officer, apolitical, nonpartisan, just doing what's right for whoever the president is. It was a privilege to serve there for the time I did. I loved it.
What a great thing to be able to do in your career.
We were just talking about, I was mentioning presidential dogs.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And we were saying that Trump is the first president in a hundred years to not have an animal in the White House. And then we were talking about Barack Obama's dogs, what was Sunny and.
Oh, yes, Bo.
Bo and Sunny and Bo, see?
I saw them all the time.
There you go.
They're actually great dogs. They were really cool.
Pretty dogs.
They were also talked about Biden's dogs were biting everybody, so you're lucky you weren't there.
His dogs weren't around when I was there because he was the Vice President. And so I knew a lot of people, the Vice President's detail and the Vice President's aides and things like that. And they didn't get bit. So that was a newer thing when he became president, I guess.
I bet you never knew that's where this conversation was gonna go.
So that was interesting nonetheless for your listeners, right?
Yes, it is. So that, would you say that was 2017?
I would, yeah. So I got there in, in 14.
Okay.
Or late 13 and went all the way through 17.
You retired from the army when you came in?
I had a, my wife and I had a little come to Jesus. I was 12 years in. I was a major.
Okay.
And it was a lot of deployments and just the kids are getting older and we just thought, we're very spiritual. We love the Lord. And so we said, we were praying heavily and what's our future have for us? And this leads in now to your question. Let's get to it, Steve. And so we just said, you know what? I think it's time to go do something else, which was a hard decision because I've committed to 12 years, a couple of deployments. My career was really going well in the army. But I just, we just felt it was time for something different and to focus more on family than it was my military career, which would have been very invasive on, on my time.
Yeah.
And so I partnered with a hiring firm that's actually based out of Fredericksburg. And looked, I interviewed with companies all over the country. Long story short in that, got this opportunity with a startup in the Austin area. My wife's a native Austinite, so this was kind of home.
Okay, there's the tie.
There's a tie. I grew up in South Texas. My wife's a native Austinite. And, but as we had the opportunity, I said, darling, I'm not a city guy. I'm more of a outside the city guy. And she goes, nope, no problem. I got the perfect place. So let's go check it out. And that was dripping Springs, Texas.
Where'd you grow up in South Texas?
Edinburgh, Texas.
I'm from West Lico.
Come on, let's go Valley. Let's go Valley.
That's right.
I lived, I went from, lived there from when I was four, all the way till I went to Texas A and M.
Oh, wow.
So I graduated of Edinburgh North High School, class of 2000.
So I, I grew up, well, like partly in West Lico and then I went to Corpus, but my family's all from down there.
I enjoyed the valley. The food is amazing.
Oh, yeah. There's nothing like valley Mexican food, for sure.
The schools in Edinburgh, Texas, where I grew up are actually really good. I had a great public education. This will kind of lead into, we talk about the school board stuff here in a little bit, but had a great, I was raised very, very well down there and we really loved it. And so when we're looking to place to leave Washington DC from, which is where we were.
The valley was not on your top.
It wasn't. My family's long since gone and all those types of things. And so, so dripping Springs, we came to visit, went down, down to Mercer and kind of almost down where we are now here talking. And man, we just fell in love with the place. And so we moved here, moved into a place in Belterra because I needed kind of proximity to Austin.
Sure.
At the time, I wish I would have moved out way west of town, just because.
Hey, I know a real estate agent.
I know. Yeah, but now I could have gotten cheap. Now you can't. So in hindsight, it is what it is. But nonetheless, we love it here in dripping Springs. My wife and I are heavily involved in all kinds of things, everything from community service to coaching sports to church and all the things. And then I was crazy enough to run for school board and we'll get to that here eventually.
Yeah, we will. When you went to A and M, did you go ROTC?
I was in the Corps Cadets. I was. A couple of buddies that graduated before I did were in there and they brought me up to visit them when they were, you know, I was like, oh, this is the coolest thing ever. Look at these uniforms and all this stuff. And, and I'll tell this story real quick if I could, Steve. So, yeah, I would go join the Corps Cadets, join the Aggie Band, which was amazing. Love that. Trombone player, absolutely. Was bugle rank my senior year, which was a lot of fun. Anyways, so didn't plan to go in the military or any of that type of stuff. And then my sophomore years, we all remember 2001, nine 11 happens. Now, the sophomore cadet, I was an army ROTC, and I just felt, I just felt Lord pull my heart and say, it's time to go do something. And so six months later, I had a contract to be a commissioned officer in the United States Army. So I'm one of the many, many, many men and women who raised their right hand shortly after nine 11 and said, I'm gonna go fight for this country and do whatever, whatever I can for it. So.
Why did you choose the, the army branch?
You know, I'll be honest with you. I tried to be a pilot. I realized that I cannot deal with motion sickness.
Oh geez.
So they put me in a thing. And I, like, Rob, I think you scored the lowest out of anybody who's ever done this.
You shouldn't even drive a bus.
We haven't even started yet and you threw up.
That's right. If you're, if you're even in a small car, you're, you're screwed, buddy. So, long story short, the army was a good, was a great opportunity for me in that. They gave me a scholarship to help finish out my time at A and M, which I spent six years at A and M, but that's okay. I, I graduated with a, I joke about this, I graduated with a PhD in the Dixie Chicken.
That's a bar in College Station.
So that's all right. You hold that against me. It is what it is. But, so yeah, that's how I wound up getting in the army. And then what eventually brought us to dripping Springs in 17.
So the journey now from moving here and then deciding to run for the school board, tell us about that. What made you want to do that?
So Steve, I talked about, you know, my background. And I have two kids here in the public school system in dripping Springs. And I had some good friends of mine that in 2022, or 2021, 2022, decided to run for school board and were elected. And, and I got to know them, we all go to church together, this kind of stuff. And about, oh, a couple of years later, I guess we're in 2023 now, they, you know, kind of called me and said, hey, Rob, it's your turn.
Oh geez.
My turn for what? And they said, your turn to come, come join this adventure, right? There was a school board member rolling off and an opportunity was coming up. And they said, you should consider it. I said, I did. No, thank you, right?
I thought about it and no.
I thought about it, no.
Thankless job sometimes.
But as we've talked about before, I'm a very spiritual man. And I just felt the Lord say, man, like, yes, you have these gifts, use them for your town. Use them for your community. And, and I, and so I said, okay. And so I, I said, all right, Lord, if you want me to do this, affirm this, would you please? That'd be great, you know, kind of wrestle a little bit. And the affirmation from many in our community was astounding, which I was humbled by, completely humbled by. I'm not a guy who likes to think I'm anything more than just a servant and a public servant and a government servant and a servant of, of the Lord. And so when that happened, I said, let's give this all we got. And so 2023, I was elected to the school board that now I have the opportunity to invest time and make absolutely zero money.
Hey, that sounds like my job.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a lot of people know that, man. They're like, Rob, how much time do you put in a week? It's about 20 hours, like, and you get nothing? I said, that's not true. I get a lot.
Yeah.
But nothing monetary. I get a lot from this, from this opportunity that the community has given me.
It's just all about giving.
It's all about giving.
Yeah.
What was the one thing that really surprised you? We've, we've had a lot of, I kind of, I guess accidental politicians on our show before. And what was the one thing that really surprised you about running for school board that you didn't think that would like, you're like, okay, I want to serve my community? And now you're a politician.
Yeah, great, great question. I don't know if anything really surprised me, being a guy who's been in DC inside the Beltway, around Capitol Hill a lot. I, I kind of had an understanding of what it is. When you throw your name into something and you have, you know, values and stances that you're not going to necessarily compromise on. That there, that opens up opportunities for ridicule and those types of things. And some of that happened when I ran. You know, I'm open about my, my faith. I'm open about my values. And, and so the decisions I make are going to align with those things. And so there's people who don't respect that and appreciate that. And that's, that's okay. That's part of it. And I would say though, what would actually surprise me wasn't a negative thing, it was a positive thing. I, I was amazed at how many people were like, Rob, we think you're great. We should do this. I don't view myself that way. I, I've always just been the grunt, making things happen.
Making things happen. Well, that's probably why they said you should do it.
Probably, Steve.
That's always the way it is. Do you consider yourself a politician now?
No, I'm not a politician. I'm, I'm a servant. I'm a servant. That's how I view this role.
Have a little bit of politician in you.
I'm a good public speaker. I can, I, I know what I know. I'm pretty sharp. God's given me gifts and I'm just using those.
He can talk the shell off a turtle.
The gift of gab is how I like to view a show. I have the gift of gab.
Is that what they say down in the valley?
Yeah, it's, it's a valley thing. You talk the, actually you talk the husk off the tamale is what it, is what it is down there. I think the biggest thing or the thing that I have heard more often than not was the impact that it had on their families too. It's like, you know, your children and your children are, yeah, exactly. Your children's more, your children are more in the public eye and there's more eyes on them too, and then your spouse as well. I know that we've, we've talked many times to Peggy Hippolyta and bless her heart.
I know her well, yes.
The things that people would, would do.
Yeah.
It was crazy to me.
Have you had some really nasty things said about you that you know of?
Not that I know of.
Let me pull them up.
And I'll answer kind of the, the thing about the family deal, Michelle. I'll just throw that in there. This is how awesome my family is. So when I was deliberating this and I, I made the decision that night and I told my wife and my kids, my kids went upstairs. They were, they were about three years younger than they are now. I got a high schooler now and a, a fifth grader. And they literally went upstairs and made campaign signs and brought them down to me. I'm like.
There's an affirmation.
Is there not anything better than that, right? And so believe it or not, you know, my stuff, my campaigning has been very positive. I've been, I'm a positive guy generally. I like to look for the very best in things. Sure, there's been things I'm like, are you kidding me? But most of it has been extremely positive. And I think that's a reflection of our community. Our community is a great place to live. It's a great place to raise a family. And the people here are generally really awesome.
Yeah.
Right? Texas is still Texas in dripping Springs and I value that. And I want to continue to embody that in any position I get a chance to have here in this community.
I think this town still has a better sense of community than a lot of towns do.
I would agree with that 100%.
We're a lot tighter than a lot of other places.
Yep.
So school boards, tell us why school boards are important. And what's the history of the school boards?
Yeah, so they're, they're important because it's all about local control. The, the responsibility to educate children resides with the states. The state of Texas takes the responsibility to, you know, fund those things and handle a lot of that. When it comes down to the true nuts and bolts of how a school district is going to operate, where it's going to build a school and how it's going to build a school and who's going to build a school and how they're going to run their budget. All of that, what curriculum they're going to use.
So you guys decide curriculum?
Absolutely. The State Board of Education approves curriculum.
Okay.
But locally, we have the authority to, to decide on the curriculum we feel best fits our kids. There's not a one size fits all approach to education in the state of Texas, and there certainly isn't at, at the federal level.
Yeah.
And so local school boards are critical and essential in, in the oversight of the school district. And it kind of remember, you know, one thing I want to point out is, you know, the, the ones who oversee the district are community members that are elected by the community. And so the community all has a voice in everything that happens within our school district, right? And then of course, the superintendent works for the school board, all seven of us. So she's got a really tough job.
Yeah.
Which let me give her a plug right now. I think our superintendent is phenomenal. She works really, really hard, harder than most people that I know. And, and so I'm really impressed with her and a lot of the work that she's been doing in our community since she got here about four years ago. Coming after COVID, which we all know that how difficult that was, right? But there's a lot of things that's changed since that time as well. So. Yeah.
But so that's, yeah, I like the local approach. The, the federal thing, and I kind of go off on a tangent and then we'll come back to our school board. Do you think there's a possibility that the Department of Ed might go away?
No.
You don't think so?
No.
Not in, not in total.
No, because the, the president doesn't have that authority, right? It's, it's a congressional mandate and I don't see any pathway of that getting through the Senate. Or, you know, and in, with the, with that, with the filibuster in place. And so I don't see that going away. And so, you know, to be honest though, it doesn't have a lot of impact.
Really?
Doesn't. No. I mean, outside of Title Nine, Title Nine, that, that federal statute has the most amount of impact on our district. Outside of that, we, we get some funds and things like that for child nutrition and some specific populations and things like that, which, but when it comes from a budgetary perspective, it's a very, very small amount of money for our district. And so all of our money, to be honest, comes from local property taxes.
Local property tax. I'm glad you said that because I think that is, a lot of people don't understand that. They think you guys are getting half your money from the federal government.
No, sir. Not at all. I think it's one percent maybe.
Is it really that little?
It's such a small number.
But then they, they do have some control over what you guys teach, right?
I mean, no, that's all from the state of Texas.
Interesting.
All from the state of Texas.
I'm learning all kinds of new stuff.
Look at that.
We should start a podcast.
Hey, oh, wait, I forget to hit record.
Did you?
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
People are going to be confused when they turn on, it is happening in this podcast.
So I have a question that is, is kind of been plaguing me and you may or may not know the answer to this, but explain to me like, like a third grader, why are school property taxes still mandated and still applied to our seniors, our senior population? I have never understood.
And let me caveat this, because anytime I go places, I talk, you know, as a school board trustee, I'm going to bring all my personal opinions in now for a lot of the stuff we're talking about. So just for the record, let it reflect the Rob Stock and his personal opinions on a lot of this stuff. So property taxes are difficult, right? As it relates to, they are truly, for the most part, how schools get funded. Now, the state of Texas and legislature has a lot to do with this. And that's something called, what's called the student allotment. The student allotment is the allocation of how much a school district gets to keep of their local property tax collections. Or how much money the state will give on top of local property tax collections to fully fund a school district.
The Robin Hood.
That's a little bit different, Michelle. I'll get to Robin Hood. And I'm going to really confuse the heck out of all of your listeners. But just know that your trustee, my colleagues and I get this stuff. So $6,160 is that amount, right? So dripping Springs, we collect property taxes based on, you know, the tax rate that we've established. There's two sides of that tax rate. There's interest and sinking, which is for debt and bonds, bond capacity, which we'll talk about here in a little bit. And then we have maintenance and operations, M and O. Now, over the last six years, the property taxes for dripping Springs ISD here in our community has decreased. Two years ago, we passed the single largest property tax decrease for the school district at 18 cents in over 15 years. And we did that because we understand the challenges our taxpayers are dealing with as it relates to increasing property values. So even though our property tax is decreasing as it relates to dripping Springs ISD over the last six years, property values are increasing and it's not offsetting. So for a general, for most people, that's resulted in increased property tax. I'm one of those people, I paid the highest amount last year than I've ever have before. Now, I was talking to 65 folks that are, that are older, which, which I have a great sensitivity to because the kids' community was built on the backs of those people.
Yes.
We have a ton of respect for them. If you are 65 and older and you have not frozen your property taxes, please, please, please go do that. At 65, the, once you reach that threshold and you get that exemption now on your property taxes, any additional taxes associated with the school district will not apply to you. And if tax, again, I'm pretty sure about this. Again, don't, don't hold me to this. I'm almost positive about this. If we decrease the tax rate, you will still get that benefit as well.
That's my understanding too.
And so I'm almost, almost positive about that. So the biggest thing our, our seniors can do, folks 65 and older, if you, whether you own a ranch or you own a small home here in dripping Springs or et cetera, get those taxes frozen. But keep in mind, what I'm trying to do, again, Rob McClelland's personal opinion, I'm trying to do everything I can to get the state to increase the student allotment. That's going to solve our budget crisis, that will continue to allow property taxes to decrease. And there's one thing on the ballot, on the, on the ballot, excuse me. The legislature is considering right now, it's called SB four, it's another increase to the homestead exemption of $40,000. What that'll do is it will decrease the M and O property tax that would be collected by the district. And we'd be able to return some additional, we would likely, excuse me, be able to return some additional tax relief to the residents by way of our, our current tax rate. So the legislature is trying to buy down M and O by putting more money in public education at the state level. And that then all works down to our local taxpayer here dripping Springs.
Wouldn't that be nice?
It would be nice. So we want, we want them to pass SB four for sure.
Yeah. Let's talk about school bonds. Somebody's blowing up my phone. Let me put it on silent here.
The school bonds that are coming, coming forth in April that we're going to vote on for our new high school and improvements. My understanding is that the school bonds do not pay for teacher salaries or anything else.
Michelle, you're correct.
Okay, so there has been some misinformation out there on social media that the school bonds are going to be Okay. So there has been some misinformation out there on social media that the school bonds are going to be $400 million, I think is what they were saying.
Two propositions. We have proposition A is 399.7 million dollars and I'll get into details of that in a second. And proposition B is 2.6 million dollars. And the reason we have two propositions is the state of Texas requires us, if we're going to do certain things like technology purchases, which in this case is going to be computers and smart screens and all these kinds of things, has to be a separate proposition on the ballot.
That's not me.
You buzzing again? I'm not buzzing.
Me. I don't know what's going on.
Wow, everybody, everybody's calling.
I'm sorry, Rob, go ahead.
That's okay. And so, so yes, 399.7 million dollars is going to pay primarily for the big one, which is the high school number two.
Okay.
Let's talk about that first if we could.
Yeah. Cause what if the bond, like I do, I want to deep dive into that, but, and, and one of the questions I had is if this bond doesn't pass and we desperately need this high school, what happens?
Well, my colleagues and I, let's just answer that question bluntly. My colleagues and I got to go back to the drawing board. This will be the second time this, this, this proposition is on the ballot. Now here's what's different from last time. The voters, again, this is all before I got on the school board, the voters approved to spend money to design the second high school. That is done almost in entirety. We had a meeting this past week where we approved the design development for that project. And so the community is going to see over the next couple of months, what the high school number two is going to look like. We know where we're going to build it. We know how many square feet we're going to have. We have basically a shovel ready project that we're taking to the community. And an important piece of that is a lot of times when you, when you put a proposition to the ballot, you're kind of guessing what the cost is going to be. In this particular case, we designed a building, we've specked it all out. We've worked very, very hard behind the scenes to get the cost down to the lowest amount we feel we possibly can, which by the way, is still a lot of money. The project cost in this high school is about 250 million dollars. That's a lot of money, but let me put that in perspective for all of your listeners and for y'all. We're doing the single largest non-residential development in the history of dripping springs. Let's let that sit in for a second, right? It's not, I mean, residential communities, obviously they build hundreds, in some cases like Belcher, thousands of homes, right? It's larger per square mile, but this is the single largest development project in our history. We literally have to build our own wastewater facility for this deal because the city can't get to us out there. We're on Darden Hill and Sawyer Ranch. We're building a baseball field, softball fields. We are going to ensure that whatever's available currently for dripping springs tiger, ninth through 12th is available for a dripping springs or whatever it is, you know, other side of town school to be named later. They're going to have the same opportunities. That's the biggest thing about this for, for I want our community to get is we are trying to create an opportunity for no matter if you live in the east or north or south or west part of town, the kids are going to get the same opportunities. Varsity football, varsity, baseball, band, orchestra, performing arts, ag barn, you name it. We're doing it. And so to do, to accommodate that and to meet that request, it's a lot of money.
The argument that I've heard for it is I've heard a lot of argument against it. Obviously it's just money, money, money in the bonds, but the argument I've heard for it is if you're wanting your children, your child to participate in the band, the football, the wrestling, the theater arts or whatever, is that right now they are so overcrowded that a lot, they don't have enough space for all of these kids to participate in these. And some of these kids are eating lunch at 10 AM because there's so many people.
I think that comes down to when people hear school bonds is up or prop, what is it? Is it proposition?
It's a school bond, yes.
School bond is up for election. What they hear is a tax, a tax increase. It's, oh, they're going to raise our taxes. Is that true? And if not, what would you like them to hear instead?
This is, this is obviously a huge, important topic. And here's the deal. We actually did a kind of a poll on this and no matter what I say here, I'm about to say here, half you are not going to believe me. And I understand that, but let me just tell you, again, Rob's opinion of exactly implications on this. My colleagues and I, with this bond passing, a lot of it has to do with bond capacity. Currently our interest in sinking rate, we're allowed to tax up to 50% for every hundred dollars. That's what the state of Texas allows us to do. We're at 35 cents for every hundred dollars. So we're 15 cents lower per hundred than we're allowed to go under, under the statute. So I want to set that clear first and foremost, right? Secondly, when you have, on that particular rate of 35 cents for a hundred, you have a bond capacity based on your growth forecast and the people who live here. And for us, that's about $500 million. This bond proposition is going to come in at about $400 million, not about 402 point, whatever it is, million dollars, which leaves us a hundred million dollars of additional capacity. Again, these are rough estimates of additional capacity at the current tax rate. What that means is the current tax rate is not expected to increase, but, but, but when you take on debt, and again, I want to be clear about this, especially all my conservative brothers and sisters out there, when you take on debt, of course you have to pay more taxes to get rid of the debt, right? Now here in dripping springs, we pay off debt early. This year alone, we're going to pay off over $20 million of debt early. All right. So we're not going to, we don't plan to amortize this bond package over 30 years and pay up to $700 million total, including the, the interest, right? We don't anticipate or planning to do that. So let me just go back and circle back. We do not anticipate increasing your tax rate for this bond proposition. That is not the plan. It's not what we anticipate doing. At the same time though, you take on debt till you have to have more. So what, what that means is I can't lower the tax rate because we've taken on the debt. So that's the answer. Half y'all aren't going to understand that or believe me about that, but I get it. But that's the answer.
That is probably the clearest explanation for that, that I have ever heard.
Well, I appreciate that, Steve.
Because a lot of times we'll go as realtors, we'll go to these presentations and it just feels like they're kind of not saying certain words and it's like you just, it, it, it won't take any more money out of my pocket and we could have this great facility here in town. Now I understand, yes, we won't see any property tax decrease, but you know, sometimes you gotta live with that.
That's right. And I'm going to opine here for one second because again, I talked about SB four before, right? If SB four passes, the homestead exemption goes up. Again, I'm opining here, everybody. So don't hold me to this. M and O comes down, INS stays the same. Guess what that equals at the end of the day? Taxes, tax rate will decrease. Right? Now again, we need help from the legislature dripping springs on our own. We can't do that, right? We don't, we don't control those, those levers, right? The only one we control the most is the interest in sinking. And again, our plan, at least for the short term, is to keep that exactly where it is.
Yeah. There's been a lot of talking about the legislature, talking about vouchers.
Oh, I have a, I have a whole.
You got a whole thing, huh?
My little thing about vouchers.
Yeah, you're talking about SB two and HB three now. Yeah.
There's a lot of argument. I used to be for them and then I was reading more about them and now I'm just 100% against them.
Really? So Rob, what's your take on vouchers?
Rob's opinion.
Rob's personal opinion here, not, not a standard. We obviously as a board, we have, we have a legislative advocacy deal that we've put together and that's available for the public to look at where we are. Again, we're focused very much on the increase in the student allotment, right? Which solves a lot of our public education funding challenges, right? Now let's look at, at, these things are called a lot of things, vouchers, ESAs, school choice. There, no one can really decide on the name. Here's the reality. I, I'll be honest with you, Michelle. I don't, I'm not for or against. Here's what I am up for. I'm for, I'm for what's best for parents and for kids.
Yeah, I agree.
Right? And, and I'm not taking a softball to get out of the question. I'm what's best for that. Now for my family, that's public school. And so that's why I'm sitting here as a school board member, giving everything I possibly can for, for, for public school. Here in dripping springs, 95% of our kids roughly go to, to our school system. We just did a poll where 82% of our community feels very or somewhat confident in the school district. That's 82%. It's called approval rating. That's phenomenal. It was 75% two years ago. Which means our community is very supportive of our, of our public school system. That should be the model for what we do, right? If a parent has a circumstance and they want another educational opportunity for their kid, God bless them. Should they have to take out a second mortgage to do that? I think that's a question worth, worth thinking about, right? That's a hard position to be in and, and, but also a lot of those parents, they have kids that have, have some, some needs, right? And there's not enough schools for kids with those needs and maybe this provides more opportunity for that. And so at the end of the day, let's take all the buzzwords out of it, all the emotions out of it, whatever it is. Parents are in charge of their kids' education. Number one, I believe that. And number two, parents should have the right to do what's best for their kids.
Where do you think parents should go to find out like true unbiased information about these school vouchers?
I don't know if you will, Michelle.
There's so much misinformation out there.
I call it noise. It's very noisy about this. You have the, you have a lot of variables. Obviously I look and I just go into the legislation. That's where I look. So I know there's, there's a bill the house has HB three. And there's a bill the senate has HB two, and there's some differences. The good news is both of those, there's going to be separate bills that subsequent that is putting millions, billions of billions of dollars back in public education. And so that's good for what we're trying to do here dripping springs. Right now there's about a billion dollars that they're going to do for, for both. And that, that would probably help 10,000 kids, right?
But the thing for me is it's not an issue in dripping springs because we have exceptional schools. Some of these schools on the east side of Austin though, that their kids graduating from those schools, they can't read and do basic math. If I lived in one of those communities, I'd want the option to send my kid to a different, different school.
One of the arguments that I've heard in regards to the school vouchers, instead of the school vouchers is that yes, if you are sending your child to private school, well then you should be able to write a portion or that $10,000 off of your own property taxes or whatever, however it was working or not property taxes, income taxes. And so I was like, well, that's an interesting argument. Now granted, all my kids are graduated and, and done, but.
Kids graduated from a great school.
Yeah, they all graduate. This is why we moved out here to dripping springs because we were in South Austin. We were in the best school district in Austin. We, my kids were going to Baronoff Bailey Bowie. So they.
That's where my wife went.
Yeah, they were all, they were all that feeder and I was, I still was like, eh, I had a dyslexic kid and I was like, I think he needs a little, you know, smaller class sizes and needs a little bit more attention. Well, I want to, I want to jump over to a, a question that I've kind of had and I've seen a lot of social media chitter chatter about kind of social media influence. You know, there's, gosh, our kids are just so bombarded with this, but what I have seen is I want to know Rob's opinion and I love the fact that you're coming from a point of your opinion and my, I got to read my question because I want to make sure I get it correct. Sitting on school board, I want to know what your opinion is about sitting school board members commenting on social media sites about either school business or staff. I have seen it happening and I find it yucky. I find it really yucky. I love the fact that you are sitting here with us and you're saying, this is my opinion. This is my opinion only, but, but I'm seeing school board members going out there and presenting themselves and they're not saying this is my opinion. And so the way it's presented to me is this is a DS ISD opinion and they're, because there's, there's private pages out there that there's chitter chatter and then somebody's complaining about a teacher and they're chiming in. And I'm like, wait a minute, this is an HR issue. This always happens enclosed, behind closed doors. And now you're publicly commenting on it.
Seen anything like that?
Well, I, if you're looking for the social media guru, I am not it. I hate to disappoint you. To be honest, just personally, I actually, I loathe it. Is there opportu, is this, is there goodness that comes from it? Absolutely.
But as far as like ethics and, and your code of conduct that you guys needed here too, as far as school board members.
Pretty much anything that any school board member would say on social media is going to be their opinion. You know, we, anything we do together, we do as a body corporate, right? So that's in our, in our meetings, all those types of things. The school board trustee on their, on their individual doesn't have any power. The power comes from the body corporate, the group of us, right? So, so if I were to go on and opine about something, which I, you won't find me doing, that's going to be my opinion, right? And so, and, and school board trustees, they very much have a right to their opinion, just like I'm here sharing it with you all today here in the airs. And so you're probably just seeing, seeing that, you know, they, people have different ways in which they engage with the community. And that's, that is a good way to engage the community to show that there's a listening ear. And so I don't know what specifically what you might be talking about, but that may be what's happening.
I haven't seen specific examples of this. Michelle has told me about some, but I think it's where they get. They don't realize that people are watching the words that they say and they don't maybe think them all the way through before they write them down.
Well, that's hard. That's the hard thing about getting into a position of like, like we're in is, is, you know, and you have to learn this over time is what you say as an individual is one thing, but once you get into a position like this, it's like a shout.
Yes.
Yes, exactly right. Yeah.
It's like a shout and it's, and it's this. And so I've actually had the.
It's gospel now.
Yeah, right. I've had to be careful as I've gotten into this deal. I've been a leader in many other organizations and, but never an elected leader before. And so I'm learning that like some other people. So hopefully there's no one today that takes anything I say and, and takes it as the gospel. It's truly here. We're just talking and sharing some opinions. But here, here's what I will say, and I'm going to brag on my colleagues for a little minute. My colleagues are very, very sharp people. We all come from very diverse backgrounds. From high school principals to real estate agents, to construction people, to psychiatrists. And we have a very good team of people on this board right now. And I'm thankful for every single one of my colleagues, the amount of time, we're all at everything. You won't ever not see us engaged in, in things. We're all at every meeting, even though I say that as I missed the last one because I was traveling. Sorry about that.
Flyer.
That's right. We have some good people on this board. They have my trust and my confidence and, and I think we're gaining that in the community. We're really trying. And we're working with other elected leaders here across our community, everybody from Sheriff Hippolito, who's a great friend of mine, to the mayor, the city council, to the commissioners court, to our, our state representatives and our, even our congressman, who I, who I know well. That wasn't the case. My understanding is that was not the case before.
No, we've been here both, I guess Steve and I collectively, gosh, yeah, yeah, over 20 years. We, we saw a lot, well, gosh, 40 years. Yeah.
I hope you're seeing a difference in what we're trying to bring to the table, right? We're truly, I mean, five of us are parents of our kids that are in the district. So we have skin in the game, so to speak, in what we're doing. And we're all trying to do right by our kids and right by our families before anything else.
How many trustees are there right now?
There are seven.
Seven.
There are seven, yeah.
What, what are the biggest issues that the school board, but also just DS ISD in general are facing right now?
The growth, Steve.
The growth.
The growth. I mean, you, you've seen it. You lived here for 20 years, both of you, 40 years combined, like you just said. Now there's some good news in this. Because of the infrastructure challenges here in dripping springs area, the growth has been stunted a little bit. We had, we exploded after the COVID migration. Everybody moved here. We got way behind. We are now, we will be in the elementary and secondary and middle school education, starting next year, under enrolled in the sense of our capacity for schools is greater than the amount of kids that we project over the next three years. That's a huge win. That's why we had to go through the rezoning things. And for those who didn't get what you want, I apologize. It was only a few of you, community members.
Everybody happy all the time.
We try. We try.
I know you did, but you can never do it.
Well, and so that's great news for us. Again, the biggest challenge right now is the, is the high school and we're at a crossroads trip. We, we have two ways to go, in my humble opinion. We go to high school number two and we approve this, this project and we move to high school number two and we have two 2,500 seed high schools for the next however many years, we, we can keep that, or we build a big high school.
So one of the questions that I have is.
Let me piggyback on that. How many kids do we have in high school?
Oh, gosh.
2550.
A lot.
Yeah, 2550. So we're dropping four portables this summer for the high school. They're going to go out just over there by the band practice facility. And then we'll have to drop four more probably the following summer to get us through to when we would open up high school number two, assuming the voters join in with us on that. Yeah.
We're very lucky that we have an amazing school district and that just, I mean, it's testament to why people keep moving here. But what I want to know is what is the process for a parent grievance? So, and I, I feel like a lot of people feel like, oh, I'm going to go to my school board member. And I love when you said that we, we operate as a group. We operate as a team. So like somebody coming to you with a grievance, there is obviously a protocol that they need to follow.
Called the trail of resolution is what we like to call it.
Explain that.
Yeah. So the first thing, when something happens at your local campus, that's where you want to solve the deal. Let me tell, we have great principles. I know each and every single one of them, they are solid and they care a lot about our kids and they care a lot about their relationships with the parents at their schools. And I say that with sincerity. Hopefully you've experienced the same thing as your kids were getting raised here. That's where the problem most of the time can get solved. All right. Well, let's just say though, for, for some circumstance, we don't get very many of these, but that doesn't happen, right? Well, you do have the option to, under our board policy, to file a grievance with, that would ultimately wind up in the school board on appeal if that is not resolved. We get a couple of those a year and, and those are, are difficult. So, all right. So let's go, let's go through that. Can't work something out. You have a right in a board policy to do that. First, there's three tiers. You'll have the local campus will look at it. So say maybe the grievance was with the teacher, the principal will look at it and they'll issue a ruling. If you want to appeal that, it goes then to the superintendent's office. And that could be held by the deputy superintendent, would adhere that, or maybe safety, security. Just depends on the, the specific issue that needs to be resolved. That's would be two. And then you could appeal ultimately to the school board and then all seven of our colleagues would hear it in either an opened or a closed session, depending on the circumstances of the grievance.
Decides if it's open or closed, the board or the?
It's the circumstances, I believe, right?
Yeah, our policy basically drives what it is. If it typically involves a personal matter, we try to close that, right? Cause you know, we, again, but our policy drives that. We don't get to, there's a lot of judgment in that. It's either black or it's white. But here's to your point, Michelle. I think it's good. Like I can do get some calls sometimes and like, hey, Rob, this is opposite. Hold on real quick. Don't get too deep because ultimately if you do, and it comes to me, I can't do anything. Right? Because now I have to abstain because I'm no longer objective, right? Objectivity and decision-making, and I hope everybody out there appreciates that we care about this. We want to be objective in making decisions in any situation.
That lends back to my point though, about the social media and the opinions based on grievances, I think that I'm seeing online. Now granted, I'm just a stalker, right? I don't have, I don't have a dog in this fight because.
She occasionally is the dog in the fight.
But none of this.
You have a right to say whatever you want.
But I'm watching this, these conversations that kind of go forth and you put a, it's a great example in the sense that they're putting their opinion on, oh, you know, Mrs. Smith brought candy to school and hyped my kids all up. And then somebody chimes in on that. And then if it keeps getting escalated, now that school board member essentially has to abstain themselves.
That would, that would be a choice.
Because I guess if somebody said, oh, well, they said this on social media, I mean, I'm just trying to.
It would depend on the circumstance, of course. And we have a very good board, board attorney that helps us navigate those things if and when the case, I had to abstain one time on a vote because I had a previous relationship with a, with a general contractor we're looking to hire, right? And I did that in my private industry, but I have a relationship with these guys. So I said, nope, you, you six are going to vote and I'm just going to sit over here and not vote because I know those guys, right? So there are certain deals. By the way, I didn't have to do that. I chose to do that because objectivity.
It makes it hard though, when you've got six, because you can be split.
Optics also, right?
It's really, it's really public trust. As an excellent official in any capacity, whether it's here locally or it's at the state level, whatever it is, you want to have the public's trust, right? And you want to do things that embody the public's trust, not violates it. And so those are just the values I talked about not compromising on. Me personally, I'm not going to compromise on that, right?
So, so the, in your, in your term on the school board, have you had to deal with any of the hotbed issues?
Yes, yes. Uh, we're fortunate here in the state of Texas, on some of those issues, we have state law that is settled.
I was going to say, yeah.
Uh, we have state law that settled the critical race theory. We've had state law that has separated, uh, you know, biological sex when it comes to sports, right? Now we have a title nine refinement that's further codified it, that, that, and that is basically, um, settled a lot of those things. Uh, there is, there was this, this situation, uh, last election cycle, actually, where we were reviewing some policies and, and there were some local people that kind of stirred some things up.
And was that the, are you talking about when the gentleman stripped down to his?
No, that was during COVID. That was during COVID. This, this was since, and, and anyway, so, so sometimes people get very emotional about things we're considering. And a lot of times that's actually because, and I don't like to, Michelle, you talk about some misinformation. I, I call it noise again. A lot of noise gets generated based upon, um, conjecture. Um, and that, that can come times come to a head in a meeting and it can get very difficult for us because we're sitting there going, are you kidding me? This is nowhere near what we're doing.
Well, it's the pitchforks, people, you know, and, and they rile each other up on social media and it's just, it's misinformation. What I'm seeing, a lot of the bond stuff being, when I said the 400 million, I meant to say the 400 million for the high school, not the total package. And so somebody came out and said, this high school's going to be 400 million. And somebody came through and said, no, this is what it's going to be. And I read through that. I'm like, okay.
And we, and we cut tens of millions of dollars out of that project over the course of the design, um, to try to get that to, our goal was to get below 250 million, but we got as close as we could to that. And even then that sounds like a crazy amount of money, right? It's a lot of money, but I encourage everybody out there who, who's a little skeptic on that. I want you to please go research, um, uh, high schools in central Texas that have been built over the last three years and go find me one cheaper.
Yeah, is that right?
It's, it, they're not out there. I mean, we have a, a sister central Texas district that's building and putting another high school in the bond at this very same time. It's a lot more than ours. Right? So we have worked hard to come up with what we think is the best solution for dripping springs. And that is a, a quality facility to meet the growing needs of our, of our kids that provides every opportunity that they can to do auto shop, welding, high school football, baseball, orchestra, you name it.
Yeah.
In a place that they could do that, that's closer to, to the home. And that's what we want to do to meet the growing demand. And so
Don't you think though, the biggest question out there right now about whether or not this bond passes or school vouchers or whatever is, will the, will they still be tied?
You know, that's a good one. Uh, um, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. And that's going to be a community conversation.
Maybe the lion.
Rob is not going to make that call, right? My colleagues and I are not going to do that in a vacuum. Um, as you can see, almost everything we've done, we looked at zoning, we put a zoning committee together of the citizens of the community. Wasn't this the seven of us figuring out what this is all going to do and drawing lines?
You need to get buy-in from people.
We did. We did. We went through and we had a committee. We, when we named the, the middle, the new elementary school, Wildwood Springs. We had a committee put together. Now we, we went a little bit off the recommendation, but, but it was one of the top three that they put together, right? Only because there were some variables around the middle school potentially being there and having the sycamore effect, right? We're sycamore middle, sycamore elementary. We thought Wildwood would be better for middle school. So again, there were some variables there that we looked at, but we want a community driven process. We want the Steve and Michelles that have lived here a long time in our community.
Steven Michelle High School.
That's it. That's the only we can't do. We cannot name our schools after a person.
I want to circle back to the, the sort of cultural issues. You started to talk about that you had some things come and people will come and speak to you, but you don't have any say in those things, but you still have to sit there and listen.
We do. So we can only, under the law, under the open meetings act, under the law, we can only, uh, as a body corporate converse in, in, in our board meetings, so on things on the agenda. On this particular time, none of the things were on the agenda. And so it was an hour and a half of just, we're the worst human beings on the earth. Um, and it was
That's got to be
It was hard. Uh, I'm not a guy, you look to hear me, I'm talking a lot, right? Um, not being able to defend any position or your values or any of those types of things was a very difficult process.
So the person can, can speak, the person
They can sign up to speak, right?
They can sign up to speak.
They get three minutes.
But they can say whatever, if it's person after person, they can say whatever they want.
Whatever you want. Come speak at our board meetings if you want to. You've got someone in your head.
But you can't respond because it's not
It's on the agenda. That's correct.
How many people can speak? Does that go on as long as?
Long as it, there are people you can sign up before, you sign up online. Uh, but again, again, if we're going to be, uh, that the community is responsible for overseeing and governing and putting everything in school.
Yeah.
That, that's a good process, right? And so we want to hear from folks. What, what gets troubling is, you know, you have, you have agitators that stir, stir things, uh, and something is brought to a head that, that never needed to get to that point. That can be frustrating in, in the position we're in. Because we look, we're sitting up there, look like a bunch of mutes, right? And the law though, that we're following the law, the law prevents us from, from engaging in that stuff. And that's very difficult for me. I'm not good at that. So honestly.
Yeah. I've seen some social media posts where they make it look like the school board just isn't even paying attention, but you, because they're not responding, it looks like they're
We don't, it looks like we don't care. And, and just so you know, I feel that and I hear that. Nothing could be further from the truth. My colleagues and I, um, we care a lot about this job.
Yeah.
And we care a lot about our kids and we care a lot about this town. And so when those things happen, trust me, it matters.
Is there, before those public comments are read, is there some statement that, hey, you know what, you're welcome to come speak for your three minutes. The school board can't respond.
Yeah, our board president reads that. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah. But again, it's, it's, it's kind of like, uh, procedural, right?
Nobody really listens.
Nobody really listens. So they get up there and They pour their heart out and it's like, next. And it feels very transactional. And, and I don't like that. I don't know what the, I mean, those sources, the law changes. We're not going to do that locally because we're not authorized to do that, but I, that's not what I want. You know, I would love to have a, all right. And again, it's only really in school boards. That's the case. There's other, even at the city council, you can have some, whatever it is, it's really us that are kind of in a position where we can't.
Have they followed, have people followed you out to your car after a very kind of heated?
We got someone to take care of that if that ever happens.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Yeah. So we, we, uh,
Because safety is, I mean, people get heated when they're, especially when they're talking about their, their children, right?
There's a little bit of a mob mentality that goes on some of those.
It does.
People get really hyped up and, and people kind of push them on to do that stuff.
But, but it all met, to us, it all matters. Uh, what, what, what our community says, even segments of it, whatever it is, to us, it all matters.
I bet you have been sitting there sometimes when somebody said something and you went, wow, I never thought of that.
Oh, that happens. Uh, we have some very engaged, smart people in our community. And actually sometimes people will bring us things going, well, we're going to figure out that.
Yeah.
Right? Because we, we, again, we talk about you, caring is truly investing and making sure things are right. And so now we encourage us not to do that. I just talked about the trail of resolution and the grievance process. You don't want to air your stuff out in public, right? Cause that can have a lot of second, third order effects, right? So I would encourage, but again, it is your right as a citizen, as a parent in this community to do that at any time you feel you probably
As a, as a taxpaying member of this community, even if you don't have children in the district anymore, you know, I mean, I, I still care. I mean, I'm a human. I care about what's going on and I understand, even though I asked the question, I understand the need for people over 65 somewhat to pay their fair share because you're wanting good productive members of society within your community. I, I get, I get on that. I still want to pay it.
I hear you. Michelle, I hear you on that. And, but I do appreciate your acknowledgement that everybody wins when dripping springs ISD is successful in this community, right? Now let's put the reolder hat on. Why does this take community growing, right?
Our, our property values are higher than just about any other place, except for a couple of communities in Austin, just because of the school, this, for the sole fact of the school.
And eventually that will pay off, right? For the, for this over 65, when it's time to liquidate and it's time to go wherever it is you're going to go.
If you've owned your house out here for 20 years, you're going to make a lot of money.
It's going to pay off.
It's not, it, and not every school is a good fit for every child. And it, and so I learned that in South Austin, when we were, when my kid was going to go to Bailey, it was like, you know, I had to make that decision. You know, okay, well, we uprooted our family from South Austin and moved out here to Podunk dripping springs. And there was nothing out here, you know, it was super sucks and, and Dairy Queen, that was it.
ACB was here when you moved there.
It was here and Belterra Village was just getting ready to get going. It was like two years out and they said, there's going to be all this stuff here. I'm like, yeah, right. Okay. I believe when I see it. Next thing you know, I'm like Chick-fil-A is coming? Holy smokes. This has got better over here.
When we moved here, this, the grocery store was Super S, which was like a glorified 7-Eleven. It was, oof, man, it was rough.
We've talked about it several times. We should just do, we should go find Steve, like the original owners or manager of Super S and say, what's the deal with the expired meat? What was it? Was that a, was that a, was that a business plan that you guys?
The green meat, yeah.
For sure.
Rob, uh, you're very plugged into the community. You're coaching basketball.
I coach a baseball team.
Baseball, that's what it is. I'm sorry. And you get kids in school and, and your wife here, and you've said you're a very strong Christian man. What, what is it that makes you want to give back to the community?
Oh, I'm trying to sum that up because there's so much for me, right? I'm, I want to say I, I view my opportunity to be here as, as a privilege.
Just on the earth or in dripping spring?
Really here in this community, right? Um, you know, but yes, on the earth too. I mean, going to combat, there's some, there's some close calls, right? So I view every opportunity is, and I got it. I got another chance, a lot of stuff. Right? So I'm trying to raise my kids, right? And be a good father and be a good loving husband and glorify God in what I do and all those types of things. And so, but when I nestled here, I'm like, man, this place is really awesome. And I started to get to know a lot of the other dads that were all involved in sports. Then I got involved in the church and I, dripping is a cool place.
It is.
It's not perfect. No, you won't find any utopian society on this earth, right? God promises that to us. That all waits us in heaven someday, but this is a really cool place. And you know, when we got a lot of people, people moving here and coming in here, um, I see a lot of assimilation to that, to those values and to things we care about. And I get to see them all in, whether it's at founders or it's at the, at the, on the ba, on the baseball field, right? Football Friday nights. This is small town hometown, Texas.
Yeah, it is.
And it's everything I've ever wanted to have in my life.
And raise your children.
Exactly. And so that's why I view this as a privilege because this is awesome.
Yeah.
Right? And so to answer your question is to get to play any small part in leading it and trying to do what's best for it and listen to the people here and, and make an impact. I relish the opportunity.
It is a, I often think about that. Of all the thousands and thousands of little towns and cities in this country, how did I end up at such a cool place?
I know.
It's, I mean, you know, you never know what life brings you.
It is pretty cool.
I even have signs that say, leave Steve Mellon. I don't even know why. You know, to, to piggyback on that, you know, if your time in the school board ended tomorrow, what's the one thing you would want people to remember about your service here?
To be honest, uh, you know, they haven't remembered anything about me. I find it is, I feel it's tertiary. It's not primary. I, I want them to have the absolute best school they could possibly have, would be what I want them to remember. I want them to remember in, you know, 10 years or, or one year, whatever it is, I got to, I gotta go for reelection next year. That, uh, man, that place is better than it was before, right? And, and
You left it better than you found it.
And Rob will have nothing, no, my name will not matter in that. And I'm cool with that. The fact that it is, is the case. And by the way, like, let's, let's double click on this for a second. When a community grows like we're growing, it can lose itself.
Yes, without a doubt.
It can lose itself and that's not what I want.
I think it kind of has over, not this past year, but I think during the COVID years, it, we were having a, an identity crisis here in dripping springs. And I think we've kind of swung back and we are finding ourselves
I almost think it's a little stronger now than it was pre-COVID. Yeah.
I believe so.
Better sense of
Well, and, and that, then, then we're, we're doing the right things in my opinion, right? We're moving in the right way. And so if we can say that when, when I'm done with this, and that, and that's reflected in, in the educational opportunities we have for our kids, that's reflected in the way we interact as a community is around our school system. I want to remember that.
Well, that's part of your legacy. And well, I have a couple of really quick rapid fire questions.
Here you go, Rob. And I'm going to mess up the one you told me about earlier.
Okay. What's the most dad thing that you do to embarrass your kids?
Oh, dad jokes. Absolutely. My daughter, now she's a high school freshman, right?
Oh, so they're easily embarrassed.
All the time. I do all, and I lay it on thick. Absolutely. Dad jokes all the time, anywhere.
Perfect. Okay. If you had to switch jobs with any DSISD staff member for just a day, who would it be and why?
Oh, I would probably do the lunchroom deal because I would just mess with the kids. They're like, can I have some chips? Green beans. Get out of here. I would, uh, I would, uh,
You'd have to learn the Adam Sandler sloppy joe song.
By the way, our custo, I mean, our, our, uh, our, uh, nutrition team, oh my gosh, they are so awesome.
Yeah, they are.
They, well, they work so hard and they do so many things back there for our kids every day, thousands, a thousand, a thousand meals. So I'm sorry. I don't want to take away from the rapid fire.
That's great.
But I would totally walk the lunchroom and make it happen.
What is a hidden talent that no one knows about?
This is the one I, I don't even, I mean, I'm an open book. So I'm like, who doesn't know about?
Well, you played the trombone.
I did. That's pretty wild. That's pretty wildly known. I mean, I got good balance. I mean, I don't know, like
There you go.
I guess that's what we're going to have to go with. I just
You can stand on one foot.
Can you finish off the episode here by standing on one leg, please?
I can do some jumping jacks. I mean, I can, uh, I was on a snowmobile the last couple of days, so I didn't, I didn't wreck into anything. So I'm going to attribute that to my, to my hidden talent. I have great balance. That's what I'll be known for.
Great balance. My last question is, what is harder, a school board meeting with a room full of angry parents or a dugout full of baseball kids eating sunflower seeds off of the floor?
Oh, wow. Wow. Um, I'm going to go the, I'm going to go baseball. Uh, I'm just, I'm very competitive. So all my, all my kids in there eating sunflowers off the, that one might send me up a wall. Uh, that might send me up a wall. I just, uh, I'm joking, of course. Our kids are awesome and I love coaching them. It's a privilege to do that. But, uh, yeah, I don't want them distracted like that. I actually have no food in the dugout policy with my kids. Well, we get in between games. We want to play for an hour and a half. So you can't wait an hour and a half to have a snack because it's all about distraction, right?
Steve would not survive. He would not survive. Steve cannot survive an hour and a half without a snack.
I'd be sneaking in.
You'd be sneaking in the nachos?
The nachos, yeah.
That's me. I'm the nacho person.
Well, Rob, this has been great. You've, you know, I've known a lot of school board trustees and there's been a lot that have come before you. You're the first one we've had on the show, but you taught me a lot about what you guys do. I appreciate you spending the time with us.
And being so open with everything. And we really appreciate that and just kind of walking us through the process. And we'd love to have you back sometime.
Anytime, anytime. Love to be here. Thank you very much for having me.
Yeah. Thanks for coming on the show. Find your joy at Jovi Belterra. Life is better here. This thoughtfully designed 55 plus community is paired with resort style amenities and social activities. They offer one and two bedroom homes located in dripping springs, the gateway to the hill country. Make friends, make memories, make time for you at Jovi Belterra. Live Jovi Belterra.com, 737-387-6870.
From rodeo clowns, teachers or doctors, and everyone in between, Texans have one thing in common, hard work deserves smart banking. At South Star Bank, whether you're buying your first home, building a dream ranch, or just managing daily finances, our 16 branches across central Texas are here for you. South Star Bank, trusted by professionals, backed by tradition and built for Texas. SouthStarBank.com. Member FDIC and equal housing lender, NMLS 410624.
Nomic Power Solutions, keeping you powered up.
Get to know your local full service Generac dealer.
Cody and Dylan with Nomic Power Solutions are a veteran owned Texas-based Generac dealer and installer.
Offering low monthly payment options, it's never been easier to gain independence from the grid.
Call or text 512-387-4232, or visit nomicpower.com. Follow on Instagram at Nomic Power for updates.
Turnkey service including design, plumbing, electrical and permits.
They even offer set it and forget it maintenance plans.
Nomic Power Solutions. Protect your home, protect your family, stay ready.
This show is brought to you in part by the Mallet Integrity Team, serving dripping springs, Austin, and the surrounding areas of central Texas since 2004. When you need the best real estate advice and service, give them a call at 512-829-2062, or email them at malletintegrityteam.com.
You know you like us, so go now to Apple Podcast or Spotify and leave us a review. Why don't you? We love your feedback and comments. Email us at malletandmichelle@gmail.com.
Thanks for putting up with us.